Don't take long, I ain't gonna be here long though. 603-606, I should be sitting down. But as I was on my way over here, it was raining and I'm thinking about all this stuff that we've got going on in this world, Brown Clayton County, and all over the state of Georgia and the United States, and thought about prayer. Scripture teaches us that we should always pray. And when Duane called me a while back and asked me about this prayer, I put it on my calendar, so I had nothing else. So I didn't know, I was just gonna come and pray, I ain't know I was gonna have to say a few words. It's all good, God is always in the blessing then and the sin. You know, when you get into ministry, you always got to be ready. You might just go somewhere and never know. And it's the same thing in all of life. No matter where we go in life, we got to make sure that we're always ready. But when we make sure that we're ready, we have to make sure that we have a relationship with our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. He said that the Word said that a man should always pray. No matter what you're going through in life, you need to pray about it. Even little small things, give thanks unto God for it. Matthew 21 and 22 says, "Whatever you ask in prayer, you will receive if you have faith." The common path, you got to believe that thing is gonna happen. And here on this board, I believe y'all believe. What forth for the people? Luke 1 and 37 says, "For nothing is impossible with God." No matter what you go through in life, if you have faith in God, you trust him, you believe in him, he will make a way. When things seem like it won't happen, trust.
Quinn Lee, President Buck. And me, Ambassador. President. Thank you.
Madam Secretary, do we have a forum?
Yes, sir, we do.
All right. Clearing that we have a forum, we can go to the next item, approval of the agenda, and I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the agenda. And the agenda needs to go under the committee report, and that'd be the second committee. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Next item on the agenda is going to be the approval of the minutes from June 11, 2024, VOT meeting. Is there a motion?
Our motion to approve.
It's been properly moved, is there a second?
A second.
It's been properly moved by Trustee Valinger. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Going to our next item will be public comments. If you have Ms. Janice.
Arcuria.
Arcuria, step out, please, ma'am. Please remind yourself, please.
My name is Janice Arcuria, and I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Library of Clayton County. I am the current president of this organization. It has been a while since the Friends has spoken at one of the meetings, and I realize there are a lot of new members that might not be aware of us. This is an all-volunteer, 501(c)(3) nonprofit that has supported the library system for 35 years. Now, Scott and Sherri's administration have been very welcoming and supporting. And after four years of discussion, the library, the Friends of the Library, which I'll call the FOL sometimes, and county administration have approved a formal MOU between the library and the FOL. Now, I have over 35 years of experience working in libraries, including prior to retirement, 16 years as the Assistant Director of Youth Services for this library system. The Friends of the Library sees itself as part of a three-legged support for the library system. Your body, the library board, we see as, of course, as the governing body. The foundation, we see, is the one that goes after the large donations. The Friends, we see as more of the grassroots support. The Friends can do things such as supply volunteers for library programs when the library asks, or maybe for indoor off-site events. I know I attended the literacy fair at Jonesboro High School where Assistant Director Rebecca James was, and she was really working to reach all the people. It would have been nice to have an assistant there. Of course, appropriate training by the library would be needed to do that sort of thing. Also, we've all read in the news about the challenges to various libraries over materials and services. It's always helpful to have a grassroots organization that's willing to write letters and call local officials in support. Just to give a little history of the Friends of the Library, prior to 2018, the Friends of the Library raised thousands of dollars in support of library services and programs. This was through used book sales. The used books were being either discards from the library or was donated by the public. When this building was built, the locked room off the lobby was built for the use of the Friends of the Library to store and store used books. However, in 2018, the library needed that room for other purposes, and so the book sales stopped. To this day, we still have people asking us when the book sales will start again. This has resulted in an extreme difficulty in the Friends of the Library trying to raise funds. Some libraries that are in similar space situations have done workarounds such as honor boxes with particular shelves of books that are designated for sale. I know some of the libraries now have book trucks of books that are donated free to the public, but some libraries do that and then use those monies through their Friends organization, you know, for library use also. Also, from 2016 through 2023, with the exception of the two COVID years of 2020 and 2021, the Friends of the Library funded four or five programs. But we do have to be sort of select since we have to pay the person for the time to do the posting. And so basically, we hope all of you, you know, like and follow our Friends of the Library Clayton County Facebook page, and we're looking forward to working more closely with the library system as needed. One thing I didn't mention is we also have donated to the ongoing food pantry that they have at the Northwest Branch Library, and we've also purchased games. Individual members have purchased games and donated to the headquarters library to add to their circulating game collection. So thank you for your time.
All right, moving on to the next agenda will be the director's report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now, we don't want this rainy Tuesday here. As always, I like to start my report, my presentation, giving kudos to my wonderful staff, and I don't do this alone. I have wonderful support system of librarians, library assistants, and volunteers, and so they make it very easy for me to do what I do. So, a couple of things I would like to just point out real quick. I won't keep you long, as our friend here said this evening. If you look at the board report, the second area about the county lifting regulations mandated for COVID, there's not been a change with that, but I do want to bring to everyone's attention that COVID is still prevalent, and so we have to be very diligent and very protective of ourselves and our families because I was at a recent conference downtown, and it was almost a COVID incubator. A lot of folks came away contracted COVID, so I just wanted to throw that out before I got started. Last month, I mentioned that we were receiving new copy machines, that we had switched vendors, moved from Xerox to Sharp. Sharp is our new vendor. The new machines have been delivered. Two of ours are already back here. All of the Xerox machines were picked up last week, and we're now waiting for the installation of the new copy machines at each of the branches. For the staff copiers, all of those have already been installed and are in place for staff users. It's the ones that go on the public floor because we have to now attach the self-serve kiosk to the actual device in order for it to be self-serve. So we're waiting on that. Northwest is still providing printing services while everyone else is in transition. They were under a different contract, and so their start date with the new machines is a different date. And so, again, they will be providing printing services while the others are in transition. We had a lot of folks out the end of June. We had conferences, ALA, Deputy Director Stanley, Ms. Melby, and Assistant Director Richard Coleman all went to San Diego. Network brought back a lot of great information from that conference. I myself was at a different conference, not library-related, but nevertheless, out of town for that timeframe. The Riverdale Courtyard project is in full swing. We have been talking about it for some time now. The courtyard that sits in the back of the library, we will be enclosing that space and utilizing it for more programmatic areas, so we're very excited. We actually have a meeting Thursday to talk about some of the elements that will go into that area. Couple of last bullet points I wanted to mention, or at least have for discussion. The Bookmobile, we heard a lot about that as well. We are anxiously anticipating the completion of that. The vendor has communicated that there were some staff changes, and of course, which delays things. So we have been told September-ish, October-ish, I will say, and I'll go as far as saying before the end of the calendar year. How about that? We'll give them a little leeway. So we expect to have that in place by then. Another topic for discussion that I wanted to just toss out. Barnes &amp; Nobles is no longer in Clayton County, unfortunately, and it has been, the topic has been raised, how can the library system help to fill, not the entire void, but fill some of the services that Barnes &amp; Noble provided? And I wanted to just kind of delve into a couple of theories and options that I had, or ideas. The memorandum of understanding between the foundation and the library system has been fully executed. I know there may have still been some questions about that. So it's fully executed. I would, I have a meeting this Friday with representatives from the foundation to brainstorm what it is exactly that the library's needs are, and what direction they need to go to start pursuing funding for these different projects. So one of the projects is to take over the coffee shop or the space that Janice was talking about right across the hall over here. It was converted into a cafe slash coffee shop at the request of the former Lord Commissioner. And so, in able to, or in order for us to be able to recruit the funds from the things that we sell in the coffee shop, the foundation will be leading that charge. Any additional monies that we take in would have to go into the county's general fund. So the foundation will be the conduit for which they can either partner with an organization to provide pastries, donuts, things, coffees, things of that nature, as well as selling library swag or local authored books and things of that nature. So we'll be talking this Friday about strategizing how we can best do that. And kind of piggybacking on that and talking about funding, each September, we host a state delegation meeting. The last two years, we have hosted this meeting at the Northwest Branch Library. We haven't received the dates yet for this coming year, but I would strongly encourage us all to attend the meeting. It's a wonderful opportunity to advocate on behalf of libraries, not just Clayton County, but libraries across the state, and advocate not just for additional books and materials or facilities, but also salaries for library staff across the state. We know we are in a budget deficit, or Clayton County's in a budget deficit. The state reimbursed positions, the assistant directors and myself, aren't technically county employees, and so that 4% cost of living that county employees receive does not apply to us. And so, again, that would be a wonderful time to advocate, to talk to the legislators, and to advocate on behalf of Clayton County and the rest of the libraries across the state. That's basically what I wanted to mention this evening. Are there any questions, concerns, any topic points?
Yes, I have two.
Yes, sir.
Pertaining to the Barnes &amp; Nobles of the satellite copy that we're trying to do, is this gonna be a test run here for the headquarters, or are we gonna do one here and one in Marlboro, try to split it up to give the citizens a choice whether to come here or go there?
Good question. Logistically, it would be headquarters. For a pop-up, we would have to either designate county-owned property for that pop-up type of thing. I don't know as if we have the actual space at the Marlboro branch right now to do something along those lines. And here might be a good test, just to see what the draw is, to see how many folks come in and assess, survey the community, and it might lead to trying to offer this pop-up at another location, Lovejoy, Riverdale, or Forest Park. So we'll see how it goes here first, and then we'll talk about branching out.
All right, great. And the second question pertaining to September with the delegation.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if a lobbyist will be there for, if all the trustees decide to come on this particular date and they want to have it in the time? Would it be a lobbyist there as well that we can solve, you know, block the elbows with to get our costs or salary increases?
Sure. The last two meetings that I've attended, the county's lobbyist has been in attendance, so it would be a good opportunity for that.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, no, no.
I think we're all excited to hear about the potential cafe that's there for drinking. My question would be in regards to our efforts to be economical. We have a lot of amazing talent, vendors, et cetera, here in Clayton County. Would it be an option to outsource and have vendors, such as makers, t-shirt people would like to come in and maybe lease the space versus us purchasing or the law of the nation saying purchasing the pastries and things of that nature? And maybe do it on a lease space and they pay, we make money, they sell, they make money, or maybe that line dollars doesn't work?
Good question. That's a broader conversation for the board of commissioners, since we are a county-owned facility, a county-owned building. The county would have to approve the lease with whomever, what other entity would tie it up.
Okay.
Yeah. But definitely a good idea, and we can talk about that later.
Okay, thanks.
Trustee?
I just wanted to bring up the event yesterday. Yes, talk to the library. Yes, and several trustees happened to be there, and the topic of the conversation, special guest was the new.
Director of the Parks and Recreation.
Yes. I encourage everyone who's not able to come to, please go to the YouTube.
YouTube channel. It's also on our website, ClaytonPL.org, under our media page. So it's on YouTube channel and on our website.
And I was happy to hear about, sound like some potential opportunities to partner. And I know that we have a trail.
Yes.
Connected to the library, and I was interested, because I think I showed it a little bit. I didn't know if she touched on that, if that's up under her purview, and how would we improve that as a connect to the library?
Sure, yes. It's my understanding that the trails are under her umbrella, purview, and there are several points that she discussed yesterday that I think are just perfect marriages for partnerships. We partnered with Parks and Rec over the last several years for other initiatives, but it's a great opportunity to found good leadership for us to do some more. So I'm very excited about that.
Thank you. And just lastly, I think you presented this out, the Georgia Library Association, we have an annual day at the Capitol.
Yes.
Apparently, the nomination, to nominate a library for an award is quickly coming up. It's July 31st.
Okay.
According to what you sent.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm gonna send it out to my network of friends because I know I sound biased, but I recognize that we do a tremendous amount of work, phenomenal level of work here with our library, and I just think it'd be, I think we'd be remiss if we missed that opportunity to nominate our library system. So again, those who are listening, please go, I don't know if we have it on our website, but the link where they can nominate a library for the Georgia Library Association.
We can put that on.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that. Sometimes it's hard tuning your own horn, but we are doing some really good stuff here in Clayton County, and I agree, it would be remiss if more folks across the state were aware of the wonderful things we do. Any other questions?
I think I have a few things, real quick. With a special needs program, every third Thursday of each month at 10:00 a.m. to 10:45 a.m., we have a program. But I was wondering, is there any way that we can do more hours or, because basically the point is there are not many affordable some of the programs for special needs. And to give them something to do, the parents an opportunity to, you know, sit down with their feet up. So if we could do something, have a tip or an hour special needs annual, that would be good. I'm gonna hurry up, yeah. Also, of course, before school starts, that would be good. But if we just start doing it for next year so that it already be in place, I don't know if we should speak to the commissioners or if we have it in our budget. Something, you know, maybe three, four hours. And then maybe whatever you have to think about, something for them because they're not forgotten, but there's no programs.
Sure, sure. We, I know, just wishing Rebecca were here. The exceptional students program, we have been working with them for the last several years during the course of the school year, but for the summer, I hear you're not clear, and we'll see what we can do.
Also, I brought up maybe in a few meetings as far as a author signing or a book signing, but as opposed to that, we could maybe do, I'm not sure if you all do it now, but need the author, you know, get some people here because there will be a book coming out. I won't put it out there this month or next month by someone we all know. And also, that was just an idea for others to, authors to come in, so maybe, you know, it'll bring people here. And lastly, we are having a free haircut for our Clayton County dude before school. It'll be August 4th. So if possible, it may be someone who set up a table. Now, it's not really a big on the outside, it's kind of like the parking lot, but maybe it's. I have time to look him up. I have to turn it on. I'll be.
We can get that.
Okay.
You can have Andre put that up on the website also.
But it will be on Tara Boulevard.
And that was August 4th?
August 4th, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. To get the kitties out of, you know, maybe. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, it will be at Supreme, Plankton Barbershop. The address is 72006 Tara Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia. There are special invited guests to speak to our you, you know, so much for it, but thank you for the time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you for letting me with that.
Next on the agenda, we have the deputy director's report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you. We've had so much activity happening in the month of June. We're very excited. We are now focusing on being more intentional with our outreach. So instead of, we're going to the apartment complexes, we're going to the parcel rate of baseball games. You know, we're our parents, they're with their children, but we have to go out there and get the support of the parents so that we can now share with them what we can do to help their child. So we have been very intentional. Our outreach assistant director, Rethina, also went to the Battle Creek Village apartment complex. She was there prior to that, talking about the resources, and they just were so about the different resources that we have, to the point where they invited her to an ice cream social. And so, at this moment, they set her up in the police center office, and she was able to, they had so much activity, so much fun, but she was able to talk to parents about what we offer, how we can help. And this is not just children, this is for parents, children, adults, seniors, everyone. And so, this was absolutely a success to the point where she signed up a lot of patrons for lottery cards now. And in addition to that, she talked about the summer reading programs. As you can see on the screen, we've had lots of summer reading programs, and we're inclusive of all, so we've had summer reading for children, teens, adults, and seniors. And so, we were just very excited about that. The one thing about it is when you think about the community, we do have expressive interest forms that we give out to the community. We want to hear your voices, we want to know what it is that you want to see in the programs. And so, based off of those things, that's how we look at the programs. We also take different suggestions, and so our staff have been working so hard. We've seen an uptick. All of our branches have had so many patrons in and out, and we're so excited about it. Let me give you some numbers. For our adult programs, we had 106 programs, but we had 1,276 patrons participate. But for our youth services, we had 144 programs, and we had 3,399 participants. So this is where all of our summer reading performers were coming out.
In the meeting, it's a wonderful opportunity to advocate on behalf of libraries, not just Clayton County, but libraries across the state, and advocate not just for additional books and materials or facilities, but also salaries for library staff across the state. We know we are in a budget deficit, or Clayton County's in a budget deficit. The state reimbursed positions, the assistant directors and myself, aren't technically county employees, and so that 4% cost of living that county employees receive does not apply to us. And so, again, that would be a wonderful time to advocate, to talk to the legislators, and to advocate on behalf of Clayton County and the rest of the libraries across the state. So that's basically what I wanted to mention this evening. Are there any questions, any concerns, any topic points?
Yes, I have two.
Yes, sir.
Pertaining to the Barnes &amp; Nobles of the satellite copy that we're trying to do, is this gonna be a test run here for the headquarters, or are we gonna do one here and one in Marlboro, try to split it up to give the citizens a choice whether to come here or go there?
Good question. Logistically, it would be headquarters. For a pop-up, we would have to either designate county-owned property for that pop-up type of thing. I don't know as if we have the actual space at the Marlboro branch right now to do something along those lines. And here might be a good test, just to see what the draw is, to see how many folks come in and assess, survey the community, and it might lead to trying to offer this pop-up at another location, Lovejoy, Riverdale, or Forest Park. So we'll see how it goes here first, and then we'll talk about branching out.
All right, great. And the second question pertaining to September with the delegation.
Yes.
Do you know if a lobbyist will be there for, if all the trustees decide to come on this particular date and they want to have it in the time? Would it be a lobbyist there as well that we can solve, you know, block the elbows with to get our costs or salary increases?
Sure. The last two meetings that I've attended, the county's lobbyist has been in attendance, so it would be a good opportunity for that.
Any other questions?
All right, go ahead. No, I'll get that one.
I think we're all excited to hear about the potential cafe that's there for drinking. My question would be in regards to our efforts to be economical. We have a lot of amazing talent, vendors, et cetera, here in Clayton County. Would it be an option to outsource and have vendors, such as makers, t-shirt people would like to come in? like to come in and maybe lease the space versus us purchasing or the law divisions they're purchasing, the patriots and these of that nature, and they do a lease space and they pay, we make money, they sell, we make money, or maybe that's not a dollar as a quarter?
Good question. That's a broader conversation for the board commissioners. Since we are a county-owned facility and county-owned building, the county would have to approve the lease with whomever, whatever entity we're talking about. But definitely a good idea, we can talk about that, right?
I just wanted to bring up the event yesterday. Yes.
Top of the library, yes.
Yes, and several trustees happened to be there. And the topic of conversation, special guest was the new.
Director there, Mr. Reverend.
Yes. I encourage everyone who's not able to come to please go to the YouTube.
YouTube channel, it's also on our website, ClaytonPL.org, under our media page. So it's on YouTube channel and on our website.
And I was happy to hear about, it sounds like some potential opportunities to partner. And I know that we have a trail connected to the library, and I was just interested, and I think I showed, I didn't know if she touched on that, if that's not under her purview, and how we improve that as we connect to other.
True, yes. It's my understanding that the trails are under her umbrella, purview. And there are several points that she discussed yesterday that I think are just perfect marriages for partnerships. We partnered with Parsons and Rank over the last several years for other initiatives. But it's a great opportunity to have with leadership for us to do some more. So very excited about that.
Thank you. And just lastly, I think you can send this out, the Georgia Library Association, we have an annual day of capital?
Yes.
Apparently, the nomination, to nominate a library for an award is quickly coming up. It's July 31st.
Okay.
According to what you said.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm going to send it out to my network of friends, because I know I sound biased, but I recognize that we do a tremendous amount of work phenomenal level of work here with our library. And I just think it'd be, I think would be remiss if we missed that opportunity to nominate our library system. So again, those who are listening, please go, I don't know if we have it on our website, but the link where they can nominate our library for the Georgia Library Association.
We can put that. Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. Sometimes it's hard tooting your own horn, but we are doing some really good stuff here in Clayton County. And I agree, it would be remiss if more folks across the state were aware of the wonderful things we do. Any other questions?
I could just have a few things real quick. With the special needs program, every third Thursday of each month at 10:00 a.m. to 10:45 a.m., we have a program. But I was wondering, is there any way that we can do more hours or? Because basically, the point is there are not many affordable summer programs for special needs children. And to give them something to do, the parents an opportunity to, you know, sit down, put their feet up. So if we could do something positive or hour special needs individuals, that would be good. I'm gonna hurry up, yeah. Also, of course, before school starts, that would be good. But if we could start doing it for next year so that it already be in place, I don't know if we should speak to the commissioners or if we have it in our budget, something, you know, maybe three, four hours. And then maybe whatever you have to think about, something for them because they're not forgotten, but there's no programs.
Sure, sure. We, I know, just wishing Rebecca were here. The exceptional students program, we have been working with them for the last several years during the course of the school year. But for the summer, I agree, that'll be clear, and we'll see what we can do.
Also, I brought up maybe in a few meetings as far as a author signing or book signing, but as opposed to that, we could maybe do a measure, if you want to do it now, but meet the author, you know, get some people here because there will be a book coming out. I won't put it out there this month or next month by someone we all know. And also, that was just an idea for others to, authors to come in, so maybe, you know, it'll bring people here. And lastly, we are having a free haircut for our Clayton County Duke before school. It'll be August 4th. So if possible, if maybe someone could set up a table. Now, it's not really a big on the outside, it's kind of like the parking lot, but maybe this side.
Where will it be at?
I have time to look it up on that. I have to turn it on.
No worries. We can get that. You can have Andre put that up on the website also.
But it will be on Tera Boulevard.
And that was August 4th?
August 4th from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. To get the kiddies out of, you know, thank you. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, it will be a Supreme clientele barber shop. The address is 7206 Tera Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia. There are special invited guests to speak to our U, you know, so much more. But thank you for the time.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you for that. What's that happen?
Next one, again, we have the committee directors report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We've had so much activity happening in the month of June. We're very excited. We are now focusing on being more intentional with our outreach. So instead of, we're going to the apartment complexes, we're going to the parts of regular baseball games. You know, we're our parents, they're with their children, but we have to go out there and get the support of the parents so that we can now share with them what we can do to help their child. So we have been very intentional. Our outreach assistant director, Regina, Regina Oso, went to the Battle Creek Village Apartment Complex. She was there prior to that, talking about the resources, and they just were so in awe about the different resources that we heard, that we have, to the point where they invited her to an ice cream social. And so at this moment, they set her up in the lieutenant office, and she was able to, they had so much activity, so much fun, but she was able to talk to parents about what we offer, how we can help. And this is not just children, this is for parents, children, adults, seniors, everyone. And so this was absolutely a success, to the point where she signed up a lot of patrons for library cards now. And in addition to that, she talked about the summer reading programs. As you can see on the screen, we've had lots of summer reading programs, and we're inclusive of all. So we've had summer reading for children, teens, adults, and seniors. And so we were just very excited about that. The one thing about it is, when you think about the community, we do have expressive interest forms that we give out to the community. We want to hear your voices, we want to know what it is that you want to see in the programs. And so based off of those things, that's how we look at the programs. We also take different suggestions. And so our staff have been working so hard. We've seen an uptick. All of our branches have had so many patrons in and out, and we're so excited about it. Let me give you some numbers. For our adult programs, we had 106 programs, but we had 1,276 patrons participate. But for our youth services, we had 144 programs, and we had 3,399 participants. So this is where all of our summer reading performers were coming out. And we love to have fun, but we can educate you and have fun at the same time. So we were very excited. And so far, summer programs, if you're interested and you want on our website to find out which program is being offered at which branch, you can visit our website at Clayton, www.claytonpl.org. You want to click on use the library, and we have a summer reading page. Also, with that page, when you click on it, you can sign up for being stacked, and this allows you to track your progress, and also with prizes. So we encourage you to do that. And then you'll also see a brochure for each branch that lists all the different performers, programs, and everything that's happening for the board. And so we have just really been diligent in getting the word out about what we can serve. Reading is fun. We have fun, we love to have fun, and definitely, we want to be inclusive of all. So we've heard about these special needs, and just like our director said, I talked to our assistant director, Rebecca James. We have a partnership with the Clayton County Public Schools. And Melanie Archie, that she's the coordinator of Clayton County for the special needs. And so Rebecca has upcoming meeting. They are heavily involved in our branches, and with the special needs, they will go run to all of our branches and have tasks and different things like that. We get a chance to experience the library, see what we do, and it's kind of like her on-the-job training. So she has an upcoming meeting with Ms. Archie to talk about that. And so that's wonderful. And so the one thing we want to do is, everyone should be able to come to the library and see themselves. No matter who you are, no matter what you have, we are here to make everyone feel welcome. For building and maintenance, and we have such great partnerships, the one thing about it, let me just kind of back up. With Clayton County, we want to go out to all county departments. Everyone can learn something from the library, and we can learn something from the other county departments. So we have been intentional with our outreach, put in flyers in a lot of our different departments, and we're building those relationships so that everyone can benefit. Because we know that every time we talk about the library system, everyone says, oh, I didn't know that. But we are here to educate and get the word out. And so far, within the maintenance, county department, I am actually, I enter all like the building and maintenance work orders. And so for the month, and this is if anything is happening at any of our branches, if it's daily, like, okay, the toilet stopped up, or if something is happening where a window is broken or something like that, we put in a building maintenance request. And they come out and kind of resolve any issue that we have. So for the month, all six libraries, we had 21 work orders, and 13 were resolved. Now, the other eight work orders that were not resolved, still pending, but we were going into the new fiscal year. So three work orders had additional parts that needed to be ordered, so that's the reason why that was put on pause. Four work orders were cosmetic in nature, so they were pausing that until the new fiscal year. And then one was being outsourced by external contract economy. And so now that we have entered the new fiscal year, those, I've touched base, I did have bi-week renewals with the building and maintenance, so I've touched base and leave our order on those. And so there's anyone, and the thing is, just like the director said, we have such a great team, great staff, that support us, that support our citizens. And the one thing, you know, it doesn't feel like work to be doing something that you really love. So we really appreciate you all and all of our citizens, all of our agents that support us. Because coming into the library is something that, they have an experience, and we want them to have a wonderful experience when they're here. So, any questions?
Just one. I remember last year, we attended an event at the Plant River, Lexington. Was that like a staff appreciation?
It was our annual staff development day. So that is, the next one is, I think, October 14th, that's Columbus Day, Indigenous People Day. And so this is where we have started planning, and it was really nice last year. This was our first year having that annual staff development day. So this is where we get a chance to have ongoing training. We hold the staff as to what it is that they want to see, what they want to learn more about, and we want to have fun with it as well, helping to kind of like bond with one another. But also wanted to make sure that we're fully trained, because in order to serve our citizens, we must be first trained on the policies, procedures, and if we have any questions.
I have a bomb on you.
Sure.
Will the trustees be invited to the end?
Yes. Of course. And so this is training for all. And so we're very excited, we have some great activities, great trainers.
So what?
Yes. All right, thank you.
All right, next, I'm moving in, we'll read the financial report.
I guess I was joking about the test. As a sidebar, I am investigating the opportunity for us to have a retreat. So that retreat would encompass the library administrative team, managers, as well as the board, and possibly members of the foundational as well. So looking into the time and location where we can possibly have that. So stay tuned. So kind of deep into the country, but.
Yes.
So the financial report, first page that you have should have listed the grants, they want to be coming. This is the pot of money that we receive from the state. The suspect pages behind that are branch budgets, and that pot of money typically comes from accounting. So those, I think board members have been with us for a minute. Remember, we had a rather lengthy discussion with finance several months ago to kind of educate and show the distinction between those two types of money. So the state money is the money that if we don't expend, we have to return. The money from accounting that we see for the branches, generally, it's rolled over to the next fiscal year, and it's not as, not as meaningful if it's not all expended in this fiscal year. So for the grant, you will see in the middle FY 2024 ending balance, up until the building and maintenance, we had some money left in that. The top 117 for salaries, books and materials, and system services, SSG money. So Rose, who is our office manager, is working with our county's finance analyst, who's on vacation right now, when she's back. Those funds will be allocated in proper channels to zero all of that out for the state. So we see funds there now, but we're still okay. Soon as the analyst is returned, then she will allocate appropriately the next, the next reporting for the state funds for 2024, we will see completely expended. So for the branches, there were several that, either for food, they were expecting to have more folks show up for programs, and they weren't able to purchase the food items for those programs. And so again, we have a few dollars left here and there, but again, it should roll over into the next fiscal year's budgets for those line items. Are there any questions?
So we don't, we're not going to give back anyone?
No.
Great. All right, any questions? Can I get a motion for us to approve the financial report?
I'm not sure if there's a report before.
Do we have a motion in? Do we have a second?
A second.
You have a second, like, trustee could.
Yeah.
Are there any questions? You and I, all of them say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous? All right. Thank you. Okay, next one again, this one will be committee report, there'll be trustee funding.
Okay, so for the nominations committee, I'm excited to share that we have several nominations for our election this evening, as well as for committee members. So we have for our committee members, the executive committee, one at our representative. Ms. Trina Coe has recommended herself to be on that committee. And then also for public relations and advocacy, we have Ms. Boyden Cuetares and Ms. Lauren Payne that have offered their time and efforts and services. And we still have a rating around, so if anyone's interested to not only serve on that committee, but also the constitution and bylaws committee, as well as the finance as well as the finance committee. And then also nominations for our officers for the election. Uh, we have, um, for our chair, Mr. Dwayne Fabian. For our vice chair, Mr. Herman Drew Andrews. And for our secretary, Shabon Fleming.
Any questions? All right, moving right along, let's go into the unfinished business. And the unfinished business I had, uh, was supposed to hear from CEO or Mr. Evaluation? I have a secret.
No, I don't have.
Okay. I guess that's a plus. Okay, new business, and it's going to be the election of new officers. So again, I was the vice chair, that position is now open. So we have a chair position is open, we have a vice chair position is open, we have a second, uh, chair is open. So we have to be booming on all three. So can you talk at the beginning of it? Anyone want to make a nomination, who wants to be chair? You're all ready? Well, I guess I'd nominate myself.
I thought that was all ready.
No.
I shared the collection that of nominations, I guess now we're doing the formal.
Okay, uh, so is there a second?
A second.
Okay, we're probably moving second, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. All right, for the vice chair position, uh, I'd like to make a recommendation, nominee, uh, trustee Drew Andrews. Is there a second? Okay, how many motions are there, second?
Second.
That's my, I'm going to move in second, are there any questions?
Well, I have one, is there anyone who was interested from the floor? Who?
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Andrews. All right, and then last one we have, will be the secretary, of course, this morning, I said that she was going to put her name down, but anybody else who want, want to be secretary? All right, you and none. Uh, can I get a motion to nominate Ms. Shabon Fleming for secretary?
Second.
Well, I nominate Ms. Shabon Fleming, uh, to be our secretary.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, so I'm going to move in second, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, before we go into the adjournment, um, we have a new trustee that's with us that was not able to be here on last month, because she was out of the country. And that would be trustee Clint Lee, I hope I got that correct. Okay, you want to introduce us to who you are?
Uh, well, good, uh, good evening, everybody. So, um, my name is Clint Lee, and I'm just here, very excited to kind of see the behind the scenes of the library system. Um, I'm a big, you know, reader, so very excited to be here. I'm just kind of seeing, you know, adjusting myself to the board, and hopefully, you know, I can contribute, uh, related.
Trustee Fleming, let me go back. Did we, did we invite the bylaws or the, uh, fire committee, anyone say anything?
Uh, no, sir, and the fire, so those two committees are completely open.
All right, can we close this out with someone, uh, stepping up to be on the bylaws committee and the fire committee?
And if you're not clear on what those duties are, have a copy of the bylaws if you would like, before we sign up.
Yeah, each one should have a copy of the bylaws. I'm Ms. Ballen. We need you. This is going to get more about.
More about, thank you.
All right, so, and then trustee Miller is going to be reading this out. Okay, well, we're going to. All right, welcome. I think we have accomplished what we need to accomplish for this evening. Is there any further session?
Uh, Stephen.
All right, is there any, uh, move to adjourn?
I'm excited, I'm ready. Well, I'm going to see you adjourn.
Well, if we have anything, can I get a move to adjourn to you?
Motion to adjourn is wonderful, me being.
So, yes, we're probably moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. Good night.